Welcome to the March 25th, 2019, meeting of the Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Rhonda Allen will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Rhonda?
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for the opportunity that we have to be servants to our community and to you. Would we just ask that you'll continue to bless our county, bless our citizens, bless our first responders, help us to always make sure, Lord, that we're keeping you first, and that we're walking in an honorable and upright way. We thank you for all the opportunities that you've given us here. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P., here. Chip Pinion?
Here.
Craig Lynch?
Here.
David Jones?
Here.
Jim Aberwater?
Here.
Lee Bogle?
Here.
Mike Kush?
Present.
Mike Vaught?
Here.
Hettis Reed?
Here.
Rhonda Allen?
Here.
Jeff Phillips?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Gail. We have no minutes to approve this morning. We also have no items that have been withdrawn or deferred. And before we get into business, I'd like to welcome Nick Christensen with us this morning. Nick is taking over as our county attorney and will be a regular at these meetings. Nick, you have anything you want to say?
Looking forward to get started working with you guys. Really happy to be here.
We're glad you're here, partner. Item 6A, new business. 6A submitted for final plat approval. Item number one, 17-2037, Taylor Estates, six lots on 19-plus acres on RM located along Baker Road. Robert Todd is the applicant. I believe this is a reapproval. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And yes, it is a reapproval, as you stated. And good morning, everybody. Hope everyone's doing well this morning. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this property into six separate tracts. This plat was originally approved by the commission back in May of 2017, so it's been about two years. Final plat approval is only valid for 180 days, or about six months. So if they're not recorded during that time, they expire. Nothing here has changed. It really is a situation where the plat approval has just expired. So they're just seeking reapproval of this. And with that, I'll be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Make motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 17-2037 for Taylor Estates. Any other questions or any comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6A218-2093, Estates of Harvest Woods. This is also a reapproval. Thirty-six lots on 33-plus acres on RM located on Blue Ridge Drive. Harvest Grove is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Regarding this particular plat, this is another situation where it's a reapproval, but there have been some changes made to this particular plat, namely for the mail kiosk. This plan was approved back in September of 2017. The preliminary was, excuse me, the final was approved in August of 2018, but has not been recorded. Again, this is outside of the 180-day approval window that they have. You do see an additional lot. It's kind of hard to see on here. I'm going to zoom in for you so you can see it. We actually have a working mouse now, so that's a plus. But you can see, this is the mail kiosk lot right in here. As you recall, when we approved the regulations for kiosks and lots for kiosks, we exempted them from lot size and setback requirements and all that. Later on in the agenda, you will see that there is a site plan for this as well, so we'll talk about that more at that time. But as far as the plat comments are concerned, the plat is in good order. They do need to show the fire hydrant locations before the plat's recorded, but that's not unusual for something like this. Sometimes they'll show them if they don't have them quite ready yet. They don't show them necessarily, so they realize they have to do that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, it just occurred to me, who pays the taxes on that lot?
It's all going to be HOA. You're talking about the mail kiosk lot, right? Yeah, it'll all be through the HOA. There has to be established for it.
So, Doug, I think I heard you say that we're going to just discuss another, in another part of the meeting later, this exact location of where this mail kiosk is, because it appears that what we've got on our iPads, the easement for that is a little bit different than what you have on your screen. Is it important, at this point in the meeting, exactly what the location of that?
Let me see what you have.
It's in the same place?
Right. Well, what they did, yeah, that original plat that was submitted now, when they submit, when I do the agenda and send you those, what I have is typically either the original submittal or maybe the first round of revisions that we have. The original submittal that they show on this actually showed it as just an easement, but one of our comments was they needed to show it as a lot. So what you're seeing on the screen is actually the accurate, is more accurate, yeah. And that goes for all the plats that you see on the iPads, just because of the times that I have to get the agenda out versus the deadlines and resubmittals for all the revisions and everything. So what you see on your iPads is always just a little bit dated compared to what you see here today.
Is it okay that it's an drainage easement?
Well, our engineering staff looked at this. They didn't have any issues with it. When we looked at the site plan, so there was no, there was no issues with that. I mean, I see what you're saying right now, but, yeah, he didn't indicate any problems with the location of where it was.
And I guess we'll see this in the site plan, too, but what's the, how do you get to it? Like, what's the?
Yeah, it's going to be parallel. There's like two parallel spots. This is a pretty small, this is only going to handle this particular part.
Okay.
Because, you know, Harvest Woods is a fairly large subdivision. This is the last part. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot the right tool here. There we go. This is only going to serve this, right through here. The rest of the subdivision, of course, it's over, you know, there's over 100 lots, 150 lots at least, you see here, but this is technically a different subdivision. So this kiosk is only going to serve these 35 lots. So it didn't have to be, they only had to provide two spaces, so they were parallel spots, similar to what was done over at Clearview Estates, I believe. We told them to kind of mimic what they did over there. And from our standpoint, I'm jumping the gun, the site plan appears to be in good order, but, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve 18-2093 for Harvest Woods. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6A319-2001, property of Todd Thomas. Six lots on 15-plus acres on RL located along Alisona Road. Donald Fletcher and Todd Thomas are the applicants. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The applicant is creating six tracts on a subject property. Three of these tracks, tracks four, five, and six, as you can see, this one's in the back, but four, five, and six, these will be accessed via a private easement. These lots are all, or tracks are all over five acres or larger, and you've got three with the road frontage here. So from that standpoint, that does meet our requirements. According to information provided by CUD, fire hydrants cannot be supported in this area, so a waiver to those provisions will be necessary, which will require these lots to be sprinkled. Any new houses, at least, that would have to be built here. Now, there's an existing residential structure on Lot 5. Now, that wouldn't have to be retrofitted or anything, but any new lots would have to be. This item was removed from the planning commission's January 28th agenda at that time. The applicant was trying to get a little more time for establishing elevations that might be necessary and additional soil analysis. As far as I've been informed, this plat does appear to be in good order now. As you can see, we don't have an engineer here with us today, so I would just say any approval should be contingent upon Mike looking at the plat just to make sure there's no elevations necessary. Beyond that, this plat appears to be in good order, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, so this, they have to sprinkle it because of the water issue?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. So let me ask you, if you scroll, if you scroll down to the notes in the lower right to the CUD or Certificate of Water?
Yeah.
I'm sure that's just a standard, a standard cut and paste?
It probably is. There's also, they have a separate note, now that you say that, that I don't see on here, that's for sprinkler systems. They have a separate note certification for that, that they'll have to fill out in addition to the Certificate of Water, so that will have to be added on there.
Okay. All right.
And Doug, you're saying they will use the one roadway for all of these lots?
Well, at least for four, five, and six. Looking at this, Lot 1 would have its own access. You can see the ingress egresses right here, which would get these lots, four, five, and six. Now, if Lot 2 wanted to use that, and if Lot 3 wanted to use that, they could, but Lot 2 and 3 have adequate road frontage, and Lot 1 obviously would have to use that as well. So, but four, five, and six, at the very least, would be dependent on that access easement.
If Lot 2, it's where you want to use it, they'd have to designate it now.
They should put it, if they want it, they should put it on a plat, some sort of cross access or something, yes.
And to refresh my memory, and maybe to challenge Nick, put Nick on the spot. In a situation like this, whoever attaches to that, whichever lot owner attaches to that private easement, they come to some agreement up front on who's going to main, how much money they pitch in to maintain that road in?
That's correct. They'll have to establish an agreement that whatever lots are using this, they're the ones responsible for maintaining it. This will not be a county road.
Okay.
I imagine it will be just a gravel drive.
All right. And is it typically, you know, like if Lot 1 has 100 feet of frontage and Lot 2 has 50 feet, do they typically just kind of do the math and divide it up and say, I'm responsible for this much?
It varies, but, I mean, that is a way to do it. You know, they could just say, four lots, access this, we're going to split it four ways. I mean, there's multiple ways, and we don't dictate how they would do it.
All right. But all that, all that needs to take place when, as far as the legal, as far as a legal document that says these lot owners will share and be responsible for this easement?
Quite frankly, all that should be, maybe not necessarily before it's recorded, but definitely before they sell the lots to somebody.
Okay.
Because, but now, again, you know, that's going to be done outside of any process that we would have.
That's not really our?
Right. I wouldn't be able to tell you what they ended up doing, because we wouldn't get a copy of it. We would have to go to the deeds office to get a copy. But if I were buying one of those lots, I would want to know what my responsibility is, so I would demand something like that be in place before I ever plunked down my money for one.
Doug, at the very top of Lot 4, in the base of Lot 1, there's a circle there with a 25-foot radius, and it looks like it's labeled wet weather spring. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. You're talking right, right here, right? That's just a small easement around it, just to make sure no one interferes with it, really has all that's for.
I would see a lot of sinkholes. I don't know, I've never seen a wet weather spring before.
Yeah, I've never seen that before.
You see a few sinkhole up in this area?
It's connected.
You're probably right, Mr. Jones.
I've never seen it on a flat, but I've heard it, I've heard it called that.
Well, yeah, it may be wet weather, just if it's watering that creek, it may be wet weather back and forth.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item 19-2001 for Todd Thomas. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6A419-2012, JNM Estates, three lots on two-plus acres on RL located along King Road. James M. and Rita Walden are the applicants. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The applicant's seeking to create three residential lots on the subject property. The existing house will remain, and the existing house is actually further in the back. This will be actually toward the front of this existing lot. We reviewed the plats and have asked for determination of the availability of fire hydrants and several other comments. Most of our comments have been addressed. There are a couple outstanding, one being that water for the fire hydrant determination, we need to know whether or not a waiver is necessary, and if a waiver is necessary, these would have to be sprinkled homes on these lots. The other had to do with showing the soils on the plat. I talked with the surveyor, who's present, Mr. Dillahay, and he might be able to talk more about this, but they do have the soils analysis back, and it's just not made it onto the plat yet. But right now, we're a little, we're still kind of waiting to find out whether or not a hydrant can be supported in this area, because if it can't, like I said, that does make a difference as far as the approval process. If it has to be approved with a waiver, then these would have to be sprinkled homes. So with that, again, Mr. Dillahay is present. Jason Laxson with CUD is also present. We were talking about this briefly before the meeting, so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Beyond that issue, the plat, they've met our requirements. The plat's in good order, just besides those couple issues.
In Lot 1, the Middleton Street Electric has that right away. That didn't leave a lot of?
Well, yeah, if you, sorry. That's going to be, there's a note on here, that pole's going to be relocated, right? The power pole on that will be relocated to approximate location shown here on, so that's not going to be the, this will be moved.
Okay.
And you can see right here, there's a note, approximate location of new power pole. So, yeah, they're going to relocate all that. Something else, and this is a comment, again, which they acknowledged, this remaining property back here is going to be combined with the existing tract, so they're not creating a landlocked piece of property. Those can be done at the same time. That's not unusual to see that, but just to make everybody aware, because they own this property to the south as well. So that'll all become one larger tract to avoid any kind of issue with a landlocked parcel.
So if this is approved, Doug, with staff comments, what would the comments need to be?
That, well, whether or not, upon getting the water determination for fire hydrant, that's the big thing, because if that's, and that, I guess that's the one that really gives me pause, is because that requires a waiver, and I guess you could, I guess you could word a motion to approve it, allowing a waiver, provided it's required, and then if it's not required, they just put the hydrants in, you know, or the hydrants, they should only need one. But obviously, if there's a waiver necessary, then, you know, they'll have to sprinkle the homes. That's the one that gives me pause. The soils information, I mean, that can be easily shown on the, on the plat, now that they've got the information.
Shouldn't we be talking about deferral until that information comes in?
Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility. And I talked with the surveyor, the applicant's representative, prior to the meeting, that that might be what happens here, just because a lot of the times, when it comes to the fire hydrant determination, we like having that before things go forward.
Doesn't seem complete.
Yeah. I'd feel more comfortable making a motion to defer.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to defer. Do you want to say something?
No, no, that's fine with me.
About how long will it take?
However long it takes to get the information from Consolidated. I know there's a process involved there, you have to fill out. Now, I believe they have filled out the form and submitted it, but, you know, there's time that's required to do those determinations, and, you know, I know, CUD's got a lot going on.
Next month?
Sorry.
We could get it back as early as next month?
Yes, yeah, I think, yeah, definitely, I think we would have it for next month. It's generally within that kind of a timeframe.
I would also prefer to get the power removed and show them, you know, how it would ultimately end up being.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to defer. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Does that also include the landlock issue you were talking about?
Yeah, well, they've acknowledged what, they realize what they have to do. You know, the remaining acreage is greater than five acres, so it's fine. It's just a matter of you're creating a landlocked parcel by approving, by not so much approving it, by recording it. So as long as they record it and do the deed combining the rest at the same time, that eliminates that issue.
I'm sorry, is the power, you've got power and telephone as one line. Is that an overhead power line or underground?
Overhead.
Once again, we have a motion to defer item 19-2012 for JNM Estates. All those in favor of that motion to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to defer carries. Thank you. Item 6B submitted for site plan approval. 6B119-3010, Mulch and Moore. New construction of 33,900 feet of office, shop, and storage areas on a 46-acre parcel zoned LI located along Burn knob Road. Hamilton and Moore are the applicants. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This property was rezoned by the Board of Commissioners back in October of last year to light industrial, to allow the use that you are seeing for you today on a site plan. The applicant is proposing to construct facilities for their land clearing, utility, line maintenance business. We have reviewed this site plan. We did have several comments. Those comments all appear to have been addressed. The biggest remaining comment that I had, which I believe has been addressed as well, was the landscaping. As far as the landscape plan is concerned, there's quite a bit of existing tree material out there, which they're going to count toward their buffer, which is fine. The last submittal we had prior to what you're seeing on your screen didn't show this part of the lot. I mean, this is all existing dense woods. They have identified a number of these trees and provided a arborist determination that this material is viable. They are going to have to do a little bit of supplementing along these other lines. This is a thicker buffer, because it's a type 3, it's industrial next to residential. But as far as the plan, the site plan itself is concerned, our comments have been addressed, and we would recommend approval. And I'll be happy to answer any question. Mr. Queen is here to answer any questions you may have as well.
It says septic tank to be pumped monthly or as needed. I've not seen that note before.
Well, there's not a, yeah, there's a septic tank to be pumped monthly. There's not a site on here. They're doing like a pump and haul kind of situation for this, for the office.
I'm familiar with this tract of land, and I think that this person is the only person in the world that could have done anything with it. It's one of those sites that just has one rock on it, and it's a very large rock. Yeah, there's no way to get any kind of, there's no dirt on that. It's just cedars and trees on it, and he's cleaned it up and made it look nice. I think it's probably a good use for that, what he has planned here.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 19-3010 for Mulch and Moore. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B219-3013, Estates of Harvest Wood. This is for the mail kiosk. New construction of mail kiosk site on 300-square-foot lot zoned RM located along Blue Ridge Drive. Harvest Grove is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is the site plan I was referring to earlier when we were looking at the Estates of Harvest Woods, final plat. It's a little, it's a little difficult to see, but what you can, let me zoom in just a little bit here. You can make out, this is Lot 36. You can see the kiosk right here. These will be the actual mail, the actual boxes in this area. You can see right here now, and this is what, you know, quite frankly, kind of compounds the frustration we have regarding this. And I was just at a conference where the lady that makes these determinations for our area was there, and we relayed several of the concerns that we had, to have her basically say that this is what they were told to do, so this is what we're telling you to do. Okay, fine. But...
So this has to do with, like, what we were talking about out off Dilton Mankin the other night, where we've got a mail kiosk on one side of a, kind of a major road, and then they've got to cross the road to get it?
Right.
Because they say 1%.
Right. Well, now, and I brought that up at our session.
What was their reply on that?
Their reply was, we'd be happy to look at the design of any subdivision that we are given to see, you know, it might be possible for additional kiosks. That's, you know, I guess it's going to be more on a case-by-case basis. Now, from what she's told me versus what the developers here have been telling me, kind of, kind of contradict each other a little bit, so we'll just kind of see where it goes. But for this particular subdivision, I guess my, the frustration is, you know, that this, all the infrastructure's already in. They're having to go and kind of retrofit this. But they're providing two spots, one of them is handicap accessible, they're providing handicap accessibility to the boxes. It's a 30, like I said, there's only 35 lots here, so there's adequate boxes, they're not going to get any larger than this. So our requirements have been met, as far as that's concerned. So with that, like I said, as far as the site plan goes, you know, we're fine with it. It's just, you know, we're still dealing with this from a standpoint of, you know, existing subdivisions having to kind of retrofit their designs for these.
So there's two parking spaces, and one of them is a handicap space?
Correct.
So if I'm not handicapped, can I use it? I mean...
Oh, I'm sure people will. Yeah, I mean, it's just...
And I mean, that's, I'm just wondering if, you know, it's one thing to make it handicap accessible, it's another thing to label it, and I don't know if they have to be labeled. I don't know what the rules there are, but I know I would be reluctant to park in it if it was labeled.
You don't, Walmart, do you?
I don't go to Walmart.
You don't park a handicap in Walmart?
I don't go to Walmart.
You live.
Simply, very simply.
And some parking, right, well, yeah, and some parking, and I'll say this, some parking regulations, well, like, for example, where I used to work at the city, they don't allow you to count handicap spots as required parking. The county always has. So, right or wrong, this meets our requirements, as drawn.
The thing is that if you only have two spots and somebody's there for, what, a minute? A minute and a half, two minutes? So I'm not real sure. If we hadn't had to do the reapproval on this, we wouldn't even be looking at it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I guess my only question was, do they need to paint it with the handicap symbol? Because that's going to deter other people from using it, or is it just okay that it is handicap accessible?
My understanding of ADA rules is that it does have to be marked as such, yes. But I, I understand your concern. I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
That may be a tweak we need to look at for the regulations, possibly, as we, as we go on with this.
We've come a long way from roll-free delivery, and I miss the horse and buck, if you can tell the truth. How move we approve it? Staff comments?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve 19-3013, Harvest Woods Mail Kiosk. Any other discussion?
I have a question. And is there anybody from SEC?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I, may I ask, Mr. Chairman, may I ask SEC a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to do a callback from Rhonda's question earlier when we looked at final plats. Talk to us about the drainage easement notations near this kiosk, and will this impede any drainage issues that may?
No, we're going, we're going to shift the drain, the ditch over to accommodate the mail kiosk, and it will run down where the existing ditch runs into the previous section section of Harvest Woods.
Okay. So immediately then, behind the kiosk, there'll be an elevation change that you'll step down into a ditch?
Yes.
All right. And Doug, just for my reference, there'll be a standard buffer clause for these kiosks, so there'll be like trees or shrubs behind these?
Well, then, maybe, there's a little bit of landscape. We didn't require any buffering, per se, but we did require, you know, a certain amount of trees and whatnot, and shrubs around it, just to make it...
But it doesn't, it doesn't have to have a fence?
Not like a fence around it or anything like that, no. Nothing like that.
Thank, thank you. No problem.
Other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Jeff, Doug is there. If we see, how many lots in a subdivision, or what's our minimum requirement? Is a five-lot subdivision, does it have to have...
For a kiosk?
Yeah, for a kiosk.
From what they, well...
I've forgotten what we talked about.
Well, this is, this is kind of funny, actually. They've been telling us the whole time, eight lots or more. Now, at that session we had at our conference, they're telling us seven lots now. So basically, all I'm going to, anytime we get something that's even close, seven, eight lots, I'm just going to say, "You need to contact the United States Post Office," make sure, either they do, or they don't, need a kiosk. But I've been telling everybody since the get-go, because that's what they told us, was anything that has eight lots or larger. So that's kind of the cutoff that I've been using. So I asked that question, and, well, yeah, anything more than seven lots, I'm like, "Could you just say eight lots or greater than?" So I, I don't know.
Something that you pulled up first, when it first came out, and it was in writing, and it said eight lots.
Yeah, right.
And what I was saying about some of that more rural stuff we saw earlier, you know, and it's acre, it's more or less a very large lot or an acreage tract, fronts on two roads, how far do we carry this? I guess it's...
Well, if something, quite frankly, if somebody comes in and has like a 100-acre tract of land, and they track it into five or 10-acre lots, we're not going to see that. By, I mean, honestly, even though that's technically not a subdivision of property, at least from our definition, and some of these questions came up during that session, you know, those would still probably be curbside delivery, because there'd be no sense in doing some kind of a kiosk. Now, there may be a situation where if several lots are accessed off some kind of a little private road or something like that, I could see something like that maybe happening. But from our standpoint, I mean, we'll never see, you know, we'll never see 5, 10-acre tracts being carved off of a 100-acre farm, for the most part. Yeah, we wouldn't, yeah. They would just have to work that out with the post office as far as putting down their own mailbox.
Well, that's a great point, like that one on Allison Road, where those mailboxes going to be.
Wherever the post office tells them. That's a sixth lot, so that wouldn't require a kiosk. Now, something...
That was the one that triggered the question.
It's a private, it's a driveway.
Right. Now, something that did, if you remember Armstrong Valley Road, Patricia Sanders' property, they had a, well, they basically were carving off several lots along Armstrong Valley Road. They were like acre, two-acre lots. The post office allowed them not to do a kiosk, but told them, basically, you can all have individual mailboxes, but they all have to be at one location.
That's kind of what I wondered they did here.
Right. So they might do that, and there are options available, but that would be up to, again, the developer working with the post office to figure that out. Because we actually got an email, and I put it in the file regarding that one, because it was a little bit different. Because technically, that did have more, that had 13, if I remember right. It was 13 lots. So technically, that should have had some sort of a kiosk, but they all had road frontage along a existing road, that, you know, there was really no practical place you could have put a kiosk, honestly, so...
It's all determined by what the post office comes out with.
Correct.
It's sort of like, out in my way where New Dawn is, that's all a private road.
Right.
17 houses out there. They all have mailboxes all down there, private road.
Yeah. So like today's, that might be different.
And one of them has a group mailbox out on 96. The other one is like you, I mean, it's a private road, and they have mailboxes on the private road, and I'm not sure how that works, you know, but it did. It's gated.
It's a new, it's, yeah, it's a new time, it's a new procedure. They want to move more toward centralized delivery, which I understand. And I even said that during the session. I said, "I understand your reasoning for doing this, I do." I said, you know, "It's time savings, it's cost savings, I get it." They're also pushing the new app that they have, where you can actually have an account go in, you can actually see what your mail is for that day, and whether or not you really want to walk out to the mailbox to grab it or not, you know. And a lot of people, more and more are using. I don't yet, but, because I don't have that far to walk to my mailbox, so I don't have much of an excuse. But, but yeah, they're really pushing that as well, something like that.
Doug, would it be possible at some point, as these kiosks start to develop, for maybe you or Mike to get pictures of them for us? Because it's one thing for us to say on paper what we think they ought to look like. I think it'd be really interesting to see what some of them look like as a finished product. We might decide we don't need bushes, or, you know, whatever.
Right. No, yeah, we'd be happy, that'd be easy, because, I mean, there's probably several that are getting ready to, if they haven't been built, they're probably getting close to being built. So, yeah, no, that'd be, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Item 6B3-19-3014, Capital Business Park Auto Lot, new construction of 3,500-square-foot motor vehicle sales building and associated parking and outdoor display areas on 2.4-acre lot, zoned EAC, located along Capital Way. Jeff Musgrove is the applicant, Doug.
Yes, sir, thank you. The last site plan we have on our agenda today, this is on Capital Way off Epsom Mill Road. This site is served by Murphysboro City Sewer. As such, this will require Murphysboro Site Plan approval as well. We did have several comments on this. Most of our comments have been addressed. I will say, before Mike left, he did say that there's some tweaks that are still necessary on the grading and drainage plan, but nothing that he felt rose to the level of needing any kind of a deferral. He felt comfortable working with the applicant's design engineer on the tweaks that need to be made. So with that, with, you know, with those recommendations, we recommend approval of this.
Make motion for it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, assuming that's with all those staff comments.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
19-3014, Capital Business Park Auto Lot. Other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. All business?
I don't have anything.
Staff comments?
Don't have anything there either.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April the 8th, 6:00 p.m. on the second floor of the Historic Courthouse.
I'm sorry, April what?
April the 8th.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
If I could, I'd like to make a couple of comments, going back to the mail kiosk that's having to be retrofitted. And I'll talk with Mike about this when he gets back. But it appears to me that when they're going to be, like I said, I know this is a retrofit design, so it's even more difficult, challenging. But when they're going to be parallel parking beside a, I believe Blue Ridge is kind of be considered a collector in that subdivision.
I would say you're right.
It might be, it might be better if we could get a little bit of a wider parking area, parallel, parallel parking there. And I know this one's kind of pushed for space, and they're having to redo the drainage ditch, but if we could get a little bit, because this one's pretty small. But it appears that they're planning on existing curb and gutter to remain. So if the existing curb and gutter is remaining, and that's a handicap aisle there, that curb and gutter at that aisle will have to come out and match the note up in the top right-hand corner right here, where the handicap ramp matches the sidewalk in front of the kiosk, because that gutter's going, that curb and gutter's going to be, it won't be ADA compliant. So that'll have to be addressed. So, and I'm sure they'll work with us on this, you know, we're all learning, but that's just something to think about when you're having a retrofit, it seems.
Good catch, Doug. Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Doug, can you?
We'll follow, we'll make sure we follow up on that. Yes, sir.
Anything else? Thank you for your time and your attendance and your patience. We are dismissed.